Statement about the conduct of the meeting. So I'd like to welcome you, as I've already done. The councils are required to attend in person these days. A number of planning officers are joining us remotely via Microsoft Teams. Please note that the meeting is being filmed for a live stream available on the council's website, and a recording will be available after the meeting. The public speaking desk will not appear on camera. I hope that's... this statement seems to change every time we read it out, but there we go. That's the one that's here tonight. Thank you. Is everybody happy with the minutes of the last meeting? We agree those? Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No, thank you. We have no questions. And then we get on to the report on the potential site visits on page 21.
Chair, just the three applications there. 816 Oxford Road, 71 to 73 Cavisham Road, that's the Drew Site, and the Gipsian Traveller Site at Island Road.
Thank you. And we did agree that the Traveller Site would be an unaccompanied visit when we agreed to a site visit, but I think there's been a bit of discussion since, and a lot of people believe it would be beneficial if we had an accompanied site visit down there. So could I propose that? And the timing of these visits is always difficult because different people have different issues. We're wondering whether to try a 12:30 lunchtime, which might allow people to pop out from work at lunchtime. It wouldn't interfere with school collection times and so on. Can we all put an email round as well? People generally feel that that might be worth a try? Get your thumbs up from some people? Okay. This is... and that the next... it would be that they're expecting to bring this report to the next meeting, so it would be on the 29th of September, the Thursday before committee. Yeah? Okay, I hope as many people as possible can make that. I know some people have already been down there with the note that was sent to us, but I'm sure people could either go again or make use of that. Anything else on site visits?
That one's noted, Chair, and we'll try and arrange that.
Thank you. Right, takes us on to Planning Appeals on page 25.
Nothing to add to the report, and there are no subsequent appendix reports on this one this time, Chair.
Okay, anybody want to add anything? No, not seeing anybody, so can we note that? And then we go on to the applications for prior approval on page 29.
Officers, nothing further to add on this one, Chair.
Anybody want to ask or comment? No, can we note that then? Thank you. Which takes us through the first section, and we get on to planning applications to be determined now. We have public speaking on item eight, which is the 75 to 81 Southampton Street, so I will take that first. We also have Ward Councillor Glenn Dennis here for item 10, the Scowers Lane Report. So I'm going to take item eight and then item 10, and then we'll go back to seven and nine. Is that okay with everybody? Thank you. So on to 75 to 81 Southampton Street on page 61.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. This is item eight on page 61 of the Main Agenda Reports pack, and relates to the site of the former Co-op Funeral Care Building at 75 to 81 Southampton Street. The application seeks full planning permission for demolition of the existing single-storey building and construction of a four-story building comprising of 19 dwellings and associated works, which includes soft landscaping and servicing access from Southampton Street. The officer recommendation is to grant full planning permission subject to the Section 106 obligations and conditions which are outlined within the recommendation box on the first page of the report. And at this stage, Chair, I have nothing further to add to that set out within the report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, as I say, public speaking on this. And the first person, I believe, is Dave Jenkins, who's going to... is an objector. Is Mr Jenkins here? Do you want to take a seat at the desk and put the microphone on? Thank you. You just want to introduce yourself, and then we'll start the five-minute timing after that.
Super, yeah. I'm Dave Jenkins, and I'm the owner of 87 Southampton Street, which on the top left of your screen, there is the building on the top right of the quadrant. My main issue with this is just the loss of light. The planning detail on point 6, point 23, accepts that for the lower floors of my building, that it wouldn't pass the light test. It says, whilst there are some lower-floor windows at 85 and 87 Southampton Street that would not meet the BRE guidelines for a vertical sky component, these are two non-domestic spaces. Number 85, which isn't my building, is a residential building, and number 87 is an office. But my concern is the impact that it's going to have if I wanted to convert that to a residential space in the future, that it's impacting the value and the quality of light within those lower floors. That's the main issue. The... my suggested outcome or solution would be that the plans are changed or adapted in order that it would pass those guidelines. And then from there, I'd be happy with that. That was my main objection.
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming to speak this evening. In 6.23, it talks about the BRE guidelines and the fact that the BRE guidelines for vertical sky component were to non-domestic spaces. Is that correct?
Yeah, currently it is an office. There is prior approval for residential flat at the very top of the building, and the idea was that ultimately it would all be eventually converted to residential because now everything within that area is now a residential building. There's very few commercial there. So my concern is that if I wanted to convert it to residential in the future, it would fail a light test, and then I'm sort of left with a commercial space surrounded by residential. So it is at the minute, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any more hands. So thank you very much for coming and speaking to us, and we'll ask you to change places with the agent, who is Angela Banks, I believe. Thank you. Do you want to introduce yourself, and then we'll start the five-minute timing?
Okay, my name's Angela Banks. I am from ALB Planning, and I've been the consultant planner working on this application. Is that better? Is that better? Okay. My name's Angela Banks. I am from ALB Planning, and I'm the planning consultant that's been working on this application. We have been working on this application for quite some time, including pre-application submission. We have made a number of changes in terms of the design, creating a larger space back and various things like that. So we have been accommodating everything. And as you know, we have done all the right reports, including the light assessment. I hear what is being said about number 27 next door. Number 27 next door is said at the lower levels as office space. At some stage, he may want to change that into residential. I don't know how that affects this, you know, because really the light assessment has to be based on what's there now. I've got no more to say.
Okay, so if you'd like to just sit there for a while, and then there might be questions. Anybody got questions? councillor Emberson?
Thank you, Chair. You'll appreciate that we, as a committee, are quite keen that affordable housing is something we seek in sites. So I just wanted to kind of offer the opportunity to talk to some of the viability on site. Appreciate some of it's commercially sensitive, and our officers have signed it off. But of course, the mechanism means that it wouldn't be on-site affordable housing. So I just wondered if you could talk to that and the rationale for that because it's something that's, you know, that this council is really proud of having a commitment to and forms part of our decision-making.
Right, the viability assessment was carried out by another company.
I'm sorry, I'm still having a bit of trouble hearing. I think if you put it right in front of you, it's probably the max...
Okay, is that better?
I think so, yes, thank you.
The viability assessment was carried out by a professional company that deals with that, as it was assessed by the council as well. The cost of the works, including clearing the buildings, dealing with any contamination on the site, et cetera, basically has amounted to the fact that it is not viable to provide the affordable housing. What has been agreed is that if the... once the building is erected, there is some profitability there, that there will be a percentage payment made to the council so that they can provide affordable housing off-site. So there is a fair process in place, I think, with the Section 106.
Anybody else? councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Hello, can't quite see you through a number of heads. Thank you very much for talking to us. I was really interested and pleased to see the air-source heat pumps used as a heat source. As you probably know, those will have much lower efficiency during their cold winter months, and they'll probably be a draw on the national grid at that peak time during winter, during the very cold days. Solar panels would be able to provide that electricity and not draw on the national grid. So I was wondering if you had considered solar panels on the scheme, on the roof? If not, why not? And if you did consider them, why you haven't gone for them?
Solar panels were considered. And you will appreciate as well that it's going to be a brown roof, which apparently is better than a green roof. So we have been jumping all these hurdles to try and get something actually very green constructed. The air-source heat pumps, we were advised, would be more suitable in terms of the numbers of units being provided. And obviously, we're looking at the insulation as well, so it will be very well insulated. I appreciate that sometimes there are still issues, but these are evolving constantly, so I think it's getting better and better.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Not seeing anybody else wanting to ask a question. So thank you very much for speaking to us and answering the questions. And... oh, sorry, councillor Gavin. All right, okay. You want to speak in a minute? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Gavin.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to the two people who have made presentations to us. This site has been unoccupied for some numbers of years. The existing building, although significant, I suspect to a number of us in this room, when we've had to visit it because loved ones have passed away, it is a building of no merit. So I think we can all agree that the replacement of the funeral home is absolutely the right thing to do. And on the whole, I welcome this application. I think the red brick, the rendering, the mantel roof and so on, the design is, I think, quite understated. But that is good because it doesn't detract from the very significant heritage sites that surround it. It doesn't need to draw attention to itself, but it does need to sit comfortably within a number of other listed buildings within Southampton Street. And I would actually praise the design here, and I think it does actually do that. I also like the fact that it is set back a little from the pavement, which will give that street, which is quite crowded in the sense that buildings often face right onto the pavement, it will give the street a feel of more air and space, as it were. And there is some small planting, but every bit counts, doesn't it, at the moment? So any small trees and shrubs are better than none. So I would support this application. We need housing. I am too, like councillor Emberson and so many of us, really disappointed that we won't see any significant contribution to our affordable housing, but understand that these studies have been undertaken and that there is a legal agreement which will allow us to recoup if things go really well with the development. So let's all hope for that. So yes, I will support this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Emberson next.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with what councillor Gavin has said. And, you know, looking at the application holistically, I think there is a basis to grant this evening. I just wondered if I could ask the case officer to just give some reassurance on the deferred payment mechanism. I know we've spoken about it at the committee before, and I think it's pertinent and helpful just to understand how that works and how that sits with the local plan. So through you, Chair, if I could ask that question.
Respond to that now, while it's fresh in our minds.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so the deferred payment mechanism, it's a late-stage review of the viability position. So ensure what this would entail would be, once the development is built and the trigger for submission of the late-stage review would be prior to sale of the last few units within the development. So this would allow the developer to submit to the council kind of actual costs that they've incurred and actual sales value details of the units. So this would allow the council to carry out a more accurate review of the viability petition of the development, whereas at the moment, we're kind of, we're obviously working off projected figures. So we would get that review in at that stage. And then if at that point our valuers identify that there has been some profit, a level of profit made that isn't projected currently, then what the mechanism does is ensures that the council shares in any profit that is above 17.5% of the growth development value of the scheme. So that 17.5% figure comes from the MPPF, which identifies a reasonable level of developer profit as being between 15 and 20%. So that would ensure that if they are, yeah, exceeding that level of profit, then obviously the council would be able to share in any of that uplift. Hopefully that helps. But any further questions, happy to try and answer.
Do you want to come back on that, councillor Emberson?
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. I'm satisfied of that, and that's really helpful. You know, as councillor Gavin said, it's inherently disappointing that when we don't see on-site affordable housing. But of course, the viability framework is provided by national government, and, you know, officers have reviewed that and feel comfortable that this is the most appropriate way in which we can possibly secure affordable housing contribution in the future, which we would hope to do so. I just wanted to ask on the point of the lighting that we heard from the objector again to the case officer. You know, I really sympathize with what was said, but if I'm correct, I don't believe that's a material consideration we could use for refusal in the future. But if it would just be helpful for an officer to confirm that, and, you know, I don't think on balance, for me, that would sway my mind, but I just would like that clarified, as it would be helpful that, you know, we can't refuse on that basis alone.
Would you want to respond to that as well, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so we have assessed the impact on number 87. Because in terms of the legitimate fallback position, which at the moment is there is a prior approval consent for a single-story roof extension to that building that would provide a residential flat. But given, you know, that's a flat on top of the building that'd be at fourth-story level, we're happy that there would be no adverse light impact on the residential unit. But yes, the rest of the building, the current lawful use is office use. That's kind of a non-residential building. And there is no application at the moment for a change of use of that building to residential. So there is no fallback position of residential use there. So yeah, we have assessed that building as being an office, an office building. And the daylight sunlight review submitted to the application has been independently reviewed by BRE, who identify a minor adverse impact on the light to that building. But officers' view is that that impact isn't significant enough to kind of warrant a material objection in respect of the daylight received.
Thank you. Did you... is that... do you want to come back on that, councillor Emberson?
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. But my kind of substantive question wasn't answered in that we can't refuse, you know, on the... It's just, I think it's just helpful to be clear for, you know, any precedent, et cetera, that we can't refuse on the basis of a possible future application nearby. I think the answer is we can't, but it would just be helpful for an officer to say that.
Matt, do you want to just... Just say...
Yeah, so I think what councillor Emberson's saying is correct, yeah.
Thank you. Right, I've got councillor Williams now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm happy to more or less agree with it. The colleagues have already spoken. I did note that one of the public objections said that it was an unimaginative design, and I'm afraid I do err on that side as well. It does lack imagination. It isn't great. I think that I'm happy to agree with councillor Gavin that it does no harm to the area. I'm not convinced it makes a positive contribution in its own right. But I am pleased to see the air-source heat pumps included. And I'm interested to hear that the solar panels were traded off for a green or brown roof. And that's really interesting, something we'll probably come back to and see more of in other developments. I guess I've got one more question on the deferred payment mechanism. Does the council keep a record of all the deferred payment mechanisms that have been set since we started setting them? And the amount of money that has come in from those? Would it be possible to report that to PACC at a future meeting so that we could see the effectiveness of that potential scheme? Does that make sense?
I'll just ask Richard to respond as an officer, and then I think councillor Lang wants to come in.
Yes, thank you, Chair. In response to councillor Williams, I'm not sure of that at the moment, unless Julie Williams is aware of any methodology that we do for that. Obviously, we have records of each and individual case. We can certainly put something together and report back to you on the effectiveness over the time of this, over the last 10 years or so, perhaps.
Councillor Lang, did you want to come in on that as well?
Yeah, I think most of it's been covered by councillor Williams and councillor Emberson, but it was just for the members of the public, really, it was an annoying question. You know, as these become more common, the affordable element being paid by deferred payment for a 106 legal agreement, you know, but the, you know, the viability... I mean, the viability seems to be accurate enough to think they're going to make a 17.5% profit. So they, you know, they seem to be able to work that out. My main issue is when this payment actually kicks in. So I'm sure you crossed your Ts and your legal department have crossed your Ts and dotted your Is, but, you know, it's not unheard of for one flat to remain unsold or one flat to remain half-finished, or the snagging hasn't been done or hasn't been signed off, and, you know, stuff like that. So I just want to make sure that legal's got this tied up because it's very... the affordable contribution has to come, you know. So anyway, thank you.
Do you want to respond to that?
I think this one, Chair, is on 75%. And just looking at this, I mean, there are variations on the way these work. So this one will be looking at actual costs and sales at that point. Obviously, they've worked out that in this particular development, they're going to have... it's probably a sweet spot of how far they've got to in the development. And again, your risk as to, you know, whether they might not ever get to that point. 75% is quite a long way in, but it's still quite a long way to go. I am aware of the odd legal agreement where we have got one unit still left, so because the trigger wasn't in the right place. And we will be sure to make sure we don't do things like that.
Councillor Lang?
Yeah, just to clarify the question, really. I mean, yeah, we understand that, you know, legal will have this covered, but I was, you know, basically asking it on behalf of the thousands of Joe public that will be listening to this, you know, they might be interested. Thank you, Chair.
Right, I'm not seeing anybody else indicating. And several people saying they're going to support this application. So can I see all those in favour of granting this application? Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you very much. And now we're going to go on, as I said at the beginning, to the last application, which is on page 89. And it's the Stadium Way drive-through application. And I think councillor Dennis is here to speak to us in a minute, if he wants to come and sit and wait for that. But I'll get the case... well, I get Rich Dietoff to introduce the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've got quite... this is the Scowers Lane application for the drive-through. Quite a long readout here, so please bear with me. So this is an application for a mixed-use restaurant with takeaway and drive-through facility in the area of land between Scowers Lane to the west, the industrial units of Stadium Way to the north, and Norcot Roundabout to the south. The proposal raises issues in terms of impact on the openness of the green space in the area, and the officer report explains why this is important in terms of local character. And this forms the first reason for refusal on your Main Agenda Report. I would just like to add here that officers have thought a bit further on this, and would like to introduce a slight addition to that reason for refusal regarding an on-site severance of the Green Links. Again, contrary to policy EN12. So we'd like to add that into the reason for refusal as well, please. Regarding highway matters, the proposal would connect to Scowers Lane via a new T-junction. The application has been supplied with sufficient information for the Highway Authority to advise that there are no objections in terms of transport impact on the highway network, in terms of safety, trip generation, parking, queuing, and the like. There is a brief update report which discusses matters of retail policy and some clarifications regarding a local piece of historic street furniture in the area. Officers have also been made aware of a letter sent from the planning agent today to all members of the committee on the proposal, commending it to you for approval. This letter partially refers to the extensive landscaping and ecological mitigation proposed. However, whilst the Main Agenda Report considers that the citing of the proposal would be sufficiently harmful to the open character of the area, officers have also been considering the wider works proposed. Following the previously withdrawn application, the applicant has worked hard to produce extensive mitigating landscaping and habitat enhancement proposals in an attempt to mitigate the harm of the proposal in landscape, visual, and ecological terms. And the current application has done this to the satisfaction of the relevant consultees. However, that satisfaction, in their comments, is predicated on the satisfactory delivery of the mitigation package. Officers have therefore sought further legal advice today on the appropriate method of delivery of these enhancements and the feasibility or acceptability of securing these via conditions. As already mentioned, the site is effectively at the crossroads of two Green Links, one north-south and one going east-west. The red line of the application site itself is very limited, and is at the junction of these links. Beyond the application site, there are proposed to be a number of enhancements, burden-back boxes on existing buildings on the industrial estate and on other trees, mitigating planting within other open space areas. This is a combination of trees, shrub, wildflower planting, and potential locations for attenuation ponds. Officers have raised concerns for the delivery of the stated landscaping and habitat improvements over this wide area, but not within the red line. This is within the blue line land. This is land which the applicant currently owns, but not the main red-line site. So legal advice has been sought and provided on the ability of the LPA to secure these wider enhancements. With the inference is this would be done by planning conditions alone. alone. Legal advice is that for various reasons, the use of conditions is not suitable, for a number of reasons. So the wider land is currently in the same ownership, may not be in the same ownership in the future. Future owner of the blue land may or may not decide to comply with the condition, or if the drive-through facility was sold to an operator, there would immediately be a mismatch of ownerships. Not be reasonable to enforce one owner to do something for the benefit of another land they are connected with. The mitigation also shows some very extensive planting and works, including ponds. It's not immediately clear of the feasibility of these. Maintenance would be required for a longer duration than would normally be used by condition. Our standard condition for wildlife maintenance is five years. This would, of course, need to be a lot longer than that. So if we were going down a condition line, you'd in effect have two different strengths of conditions. You'd have a strong one within the red line, and then, for the reasons above, one that was much weaker outside of it, and this has not been advised as being acceptable. So just to remind members, there are a number of tests which conditions have to meet. They need to be necessary, relevant to planning, relevant to the development to be permitted, enforceable, precise, and reasonable in all other respects. Legal advice is that such conditions would fail the test principally on reasonableness and enforceability grounds. So accordingly, it is advised that a section 106 would be required. It would be appropriate, as it would bind all those within interest in the land, including any successors in title, i.e. future owners, to conduct the necessary actions and be tied into performing the longer-term maintenance. So given that the application is not supplied with a legal agreement, officers consider that this should form a secondary reason for refusal. The applicant has advised that a red line plan can be supplied to cover a wider area with a section 106 agreement, but that's not the application before you. So in summary, officers are recommending the slight amending of reason for refusal one, to add the ecological severance issue, the new reason for refusal two, for failure to provide section 106 legal agreement to secure landscaping habitat maintenance. I have a bit of draft wording here, if you'd like to hear it. Would you like me to run through that, Chair? Okay, what we have is the application has failed to provide via suitable section 106 legal agreement or unilateral undertaking the proposed mitigating landscaping and wildlife habitat enhancements as presented in the application, and showing that they would be capable of being delivered and thereafter maintained to a suitable standard in order to offset the harm caused to landscaping trees and to maintain the character of the area and improve tree coverage in green links. The application would therefore fail to maintain, protect, consolidate, or extend or enhance existing habitats in the area by severing and failing to adequately mitigate the harm to the green links designated in the local plan, relevant policies at EN12, EN14, and the section 106 SPD. We'd like delegated authority to sort the precise wording of that, please, Chair. And normal informatives to be added, including an extra one about the reason for refusal two could be overcome if a section 106 were entered into. Thank you, Chair, that's it.
Thank you. I've got councillor Dennis here to speak as one of the ward councillors. So over to you, councillor Dennis.
Yes, good evening, Chair, councillors and officers. I'm here to really, speaking on behalf of my colleague who originally put this forward to the Planning Applications Committee. I'll just read from his prepared statement and maybe add a few comments of my own. Okay, so apologies for the committee for being unable to speak in person, and I'd like to record my thanks to councillor Dennis for standing to speak in my stead. Can everyone hear me?
Is there an issue about the microphone? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, I think you probably need it in front of you and...
You can't hear me? Is that better?
That's too loud.
Okay, all right, hold on.
You might need to move it just a bit back.
How about there?
Is that okay?
Is that all right? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I could move it as close as I can and try and read this at the same time. Okay, shall I start again? Okay, I have lived...
Councillor Dennis, would you like to, just because this is recorded, mention that it's councillor Keeping whose statement, because he called it into committee?
Yes, it does, I do go on to, but I will say, yes, councillor Canby Keeping actually called this into committee, yes. I have lived about, I live about 450 metres from the application site since 2011. So I have a feel for the traffic situation, which is why I asked for this application to come before the full committee. My concern is the capacity of the Norcot Roundabout. In the previous application, before the committee this evening, that's 220463, that application was expected to add a, in inverted commas, minor increase in junction usage for the applicant of unit eight on Stadium Way. Then the following statement was made in paragraph 6.18, page 96 in your PAC, in inverted commas, the Oxford Road, Norcot Road, Wigmore Lane junction has also recently been assessed, and this does identify that it is within close proximity of its actual capacity. The comment in paragraph 6.9, that, in inverted commas, overall, the two developments, and that at Scours Lane, would result in a minor increase in vehicle movements on the highway network, does not bode well for the knock-on effect to the junction that is already within close proximity of its actual capacity. The lengthy traffic study commissioned for the previously withdrawn application says, if I recall correctly, that traffic would not be an issue in the area for some years yet, but this was based on observations made between the two Covid lockdowns. I note that this report is not one of the documents supporting the current application on the planning portal. The study suggested that the peak traffic that the withdrawn application would cause would be on Saturday, early afternoons, based upon usage of another site. I have my doubts about this assertion. I'm sure there will be some extra from the weekend DIYers picking up supplies from the warehouses and outlets on the industrial estates and fancying a snack, but my instinct is that it will be busier early weekdays for people picking up on the way to work or for a quick after-work snack. Even if the study is right, I have observed some very long queues at Wigmore Lane of the Roundabout on weekends, afternoons, often backing up to Portman Road. The situation on Oxford Road is that there can be short queues heading west at any time of the day. However, the majority of the traffic from Oxford Road and the Wigmore Lane side of the junction is heading towards the site of the application. During the evening peak, and the traffic on the Oxford Road side of the, is normally backed up beyond Grovelands Road. Anything which has the potential to make matters worse would need careful consideration. Establishing that most of the traffic entering the Roundabout junction exits heading west, there is a pinch point by Scours Lane for traffic turning right. We should bear in mind that Scours Lane is used by large HEVs delivering to Waitrose and to the industrial estates on Deacon Way, as well as on Stadium Way. There is a residential park under the railway bridge to the left of the sports centre, and 200 allotments to the right, which are all accessed via Scours Lane. And often, the drivers of the larger vehicles park up on Scours Lane for their statutory breaks. See paragraph 7.16 of the report. This means that the traffic on Scours Lane is seldom without some obstruction, and could back up to the right turn from Oxford Road. I was directed by a resident to the Facebook consultation. Initially, the comments were mostly in favour. However, I did keep watching the page and did note that there were more objections as more people found out about it. After a while, it was pulled from Facebook. As Kentwood Ward councillors, councillor Dennis and I have asked local residents what they think of the plans, and a majority of those getting in touch are opposed to it for the same reasons that the council officers have recommended for rejection, removal of green space, or for the concerns about traffic, or both. The residents' consultation was made through the Kentwood Newsletter, which is delivered between the 7th and the 31st of August. I see the consultation, well, we actually put consultation in a document. We were hoping that it would be distributed to all members, but unfortunately, it wasn't. Anyway, so basically, we asked a question in our newsletter, and we said, what do you think about the proposed Greggs Scours Lane? It was very benign wording, and we had a total against of 17, total four of eight. And there was a number of comments, obviously, I'm not going to read them out. So we've also had comments about the horse trough, which was mentioned earlier on. So that's it, that's what I propose. You guys reject this application as the green space issue has been mentioned in many comments from residents, along with the obvious traffic issues that it will cause as a drive-through Greggs, rather than just a standing, you know, shop, if you get what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dennis. We don't question the board council, we just listen to them. It's not the same as public speaking. Has anybody got things they want to say or add? Yes. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank officers for including information about the cattle trough in the update report. I didn't think, since we're elected to council, I'll be mentioning cattle troughs in meetings, but there we go. Just want to point out, that was brought up to me originally through Tower House Globe, who have got information about it. There are three such cattle troughs in Reading, one in Park Lane, one in Armour Hill, and one in Scours Lane. And their concern, it being right, very, very close to development, that it was potential issues there. So I'm glad that's been referred to as a non-designated heritage asset. Thank you.
Councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate Mr Etoff going through and talking about that green link. And I really, really appreciate from officers that there was more work done on that today. I was not able to, between travelling, really burrow down and try to find out exactly where that green link went, and where it was potentially severed. So, and there's some kind of, there was some kind of deferring in there, but it said in the report that there was the challenge of the green link, and I, I'm finding it very, very challenging to understand. I appreciate it, and I've gotten very gruff in the past about green links being severed, as we may recall, and this is another situation here. So would it be possible for, perhaps, Mr Etoff to kind of describe exactly where those green links go through on the site, just even from a physical, we're not looking... Sorry, but yeah, I'd like some clarity on that, because I do think that it's really, really critical. It's in our policy. We don't need to be breaking our green links, and we do need to be enhancing those and ensuring that they're around. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that now?
Yeah, councillor Rowland, they're actually on the local plan proposals map. So you've got one that comes along, well, you probably know it's Portman Road, but it's actually Wigmore Lane, that comes down to the Norcot Roundabout, and then carries along the Oxford Road, along the line of trees. That's the east-west link. The north-south link comes from Scours Lane, from the railway line, sort of through the site, and effectively across the Norcot Roundabout and up Norcot Road.
Now, thank you for that now, and I do appreciate the addition of that point, because I do think it's very important. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lang, you were next.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Mine wasn't really a question, it was more of a comment, if that's okay. Yeah. Yeah, thank you, councillor Dennis, for your contribution. I'll take the comments on board. I mean, obviously, I accept the transport officer's clear advice that it wouldn't lead to any, an unacceptable increase in traffic. I'm slightly surprised at that, you know, I must admit. You know, we all like a Greggs, it is a drive-through. With the loss of green space, it's about who uses that green space with me. You know, primarily, it's an industrial estate where lads and lasses get half an hour dinner break, and they might want to nip over and, you know, grab a burger and have a fag under the tree, whatever they do. You know, and as I said earlier, to one of my colleagues, you know, read the Daily Mirror, never the Sun, you know, and yeah, so that's it. It's about, with me, it's about primarily the loss of usable space by the people that work on the industrial estate. Also, I thank the officer for the additional information surrounding mitigation and only being enforceable not through condition, but only through a 106. I think that's very relevant, well, very relevant indeed, probably the deal breaker really, but anyway, yeah, thank you. So I'd back the officer's decision, recommendation.
Okay. Not seeing anybody, oh, councillor Page.
I wonder if we've got Darren Cook online, he could say a bit more about the transport issues here, because I like councillor Lang was somewhat surprised at the conclusions of the work, not least based on the experience of these sorts of premises elsewhere in Reading. And I would draw colleagues' attention to the drive-through that causes chaos opposite the prison. And it's not a Greggs, I think it's a McDonald's, but it is regularly causing chaos on Canavon Drive and onto the Roundabout. Now, it's a not dissimilar location, and the issue there is not an average of demand, it's those peak spikes that cause the problem. And that is not something that this sort of analysis can really properly address, and they love to focus on averages. And so some more commentary on that would be appreciated, because the design of the site appears to be reliant on a one-way system that doesn't appear to be conditioned. I've had a look at the plans, and I can't see anywhere, any reference to a condition that requires the operation of that one-way system to maximise stacking. And the transport assessment that I've read around this refers to the one-way system, but I don't see where that's conditioned in this proposed, in the, I know we are proposed to refuse it, but there doesn't appear to be anything in the application from the applicant that would safeguard that. The other point that I would make is that there's a lot of focus on Greggs, but we're not granting permission for Greggs alone. not granting permission for Greggs alone. This is a hot food takeaway, and you need to look at the description. It's a drive-through restaurant and sui generis hot food takeaway. We are not conditioning a Greggs here, we are conditioning potentially any hot food restaurant. And tomorrow, the owners could switch that to a McDonald's, a Burger King, KFC, or whatever, and we would not be able to do a thing about that. And the demands, therefore, and the implications on traffic use could be transformed. So I would just like, Richard, to confirm the fact that we are not specifying Greggs here, and only Greggs, and in the event that Greggs were not to proceed, it would have to come back to committee. We can't do that. And so the focus on Greggs and vegan alternatives and all the attractions that they offer is a bit of a red herring, because we need to look at it in terms of a drive-through for a hot food takeaway. So I support refusal. I'm still sceptical that we could not work up a reason for refusing it on traffic grounds, as well as I think a number of colleagues have said. Whether we can refuse with these conditions and ask officers to come back with an additional one, or look further, I don't think is possible. But I address my comments there, Chair, and ask Darren to make some comments, or respond, please.
Thank you. Richard, do you just want to confirm the point about it could become any sort of takeaway, drive-through? And then we'll ask Darren to comment on the transport and traffic.
I think councillor Page is right, it could be any of those sorts of operators, we don't know.
And Darren Cook, would you like to comment on the traffic implications, which have taken a lot of people by surprise, that there isn't more of an issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The assessment that's been undertaken by the applicant has utilised the Trix database to establish a trip rate generation number, which takes into account all drive-through facilities, so has included McDonald's, Burger King, and others to try and give a wide-ranging trip rate analysis. The one takeaway they removed was Kentucky Fried Chicken, because it didn't do breakfast, whereas Greggs would potentially do that. But generally, because it's got McDonald's, Burger King, and others, that we were happy with that analysis to be kind of agreed, as put forward by the applicant. Through that analysis as well, the process which is kind of used throughout the country is not all trips would be new trips to that takeaway, in terms of people would be driving past, and there would be linked trips and pass-by trips. So they're not necessarily new trips that would be going through that junction. So for example, there would be people from the industrial estate that would use that for their lunch, there would be people that would go there on their way to work and from work that wouldn't be new trips, and they would be passing anyway, so wouldn't then increase the traffic through those junctions in the area. The junctions have been assessed, so they've assessed the Scous Lane, Oxford Road, Crossroads Junction, and the roundabout itself. Both of those have come back and been within capacity. As councillor Dennis said, the roundabout junction, Norcot Road roundabout, is close to within the, its capacity. But the numbers are, you know, once you drill down on the numbers themselves, they're relatively low increases through that junction, and therefore it doesn't go over capacity, and therefore there's no severe impact. And the MPPG states that there would have to be a severe impact for us to warrant a reason for refusal. So given that it's still within that capacity, as identified through the assessment, we'd have limited grounds to kind of refuse the application. We have also looked at accident data. Myself and colleague that did look at the application are aware of the junction. We both use it ourselves for the leisure facilities that are off Scous Lane at the end, and we know that it's a difficult junction. We kind of reviewed the accident data, but there is limited accidents, there's probably one or two, if that, within the last five years, which doesn't show that there's an accident issue at the junction, and therefore the kind of, the numbers that we're talking about wouldn't then, you know, worsen that existing situation. So on the whole, it was determined that there's no reason for us to object to the application on those grounds. But so that's how we came to that conclusion.
Thank you. Can I just briefly proceed? I mean, I go through that junction whenever I go out, really, and it's one thing to be driving along the Oxford Road and then onto the roundabout, and then either, you know, going on down the Oxford Road or whatever. But what I don't do is turn into Scous Lane, do a little detour through that is now the green space, and then try and get out of Scous Lane again. So surely that in itself, if people, even if they are on existing journeys, if they're doing that manoeuvre, that is adding to the pressure on particularly the junction with Scous Lane and Oxford Road.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So that particular junction is, you know, well within that capacity. So even if those manoeuvres were taking place, and obviously, some of this is all being assessed as additional trips as well, that it wouldn't have a material impact on that junction and would still work within its capacity. So that, you know, the new trips that would go in has been assessed, and obviously, a lot of those trips do already, as I say, take place in terms of going to that side of the industrial estate. So yes, there is some that will go in and then come back out, but, you know, in terms of the junction itself, it's well within its capacity, as has been assessed by the, or kind of detailed by the applicant.
Okay, councillor Page, you wanted to come back as well?
There was the second point that I raised, that I asked Darren about, and that's the traffic management within the site, the one-way flow. And are the, were the applicants putting forward a specific plan, and therefore a condition that would require them to operate a one-way system to maximise stacking within the site and the other commitments that are during the proposal?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, I'd forgotten that point, councillor Page. But I think the layout has been proposed. There was no specific condition or anything that was kind of put forward at that stage, but that's potentially something that we could put in to make sure that the arrangement does provide that one-way route. I think most of the takeaways, they have a specific window operation that you go and order, you then go and pay, and then you go and get your food. So I think generally, once that is kind of developed, that would be what would be provided and wouldn't change. But obviously, you know, prior to kind of occupation, that could, they could come in to try and change that internal layout. But I think that the stacking that's on site, that's been proposed, is sufficient on site to make that work, with the numbers that they've put forward. But we could, you know, we could suggest a condition if a further application was to come in, if it was minded to refuse this one.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else? Yes, councillor James.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the diagram on page 124, the site block pose, which shows the actual internal structure of the development. And there's a, it's a very tiny amount of road of Scous Lane that leads on to this. I just can see tailbacks, and pretty much immediately, you get a small queue there in the morning or in the evening, and it backs on, it'll go back on to, on the road there, and which could lead back to Norcot Junction. And I could just, I mean, even if it could misgate, even, I mean, if it develops further along Scous Lane, this might not be so much of an issue, but it's right on the end, and it's not a very big loop. And you've even got parking spaces there, and as soon as someone tries to get out of a parking space, that could cause a snarl up and real issues there, I can see just from looking at that picture. So I've got real serious concerns about that.
Right, councillor Gavin, you're next.
Thank you. Could I ask, I am a regular user of that junction as an allotment holder down on Scous Lane, so during this dry weather, I've been down there twice a day some days. Can I ask whether the traffic assessment actually looked at the wait time to do a right-hand turn out of Scous Lane? Because it can take a very long time to be able to turn right out of Scous Lane and on to the Oxford Road, and that the backup of traffic, any additional traffic, would be significant. So whilst I appreciate your numbers suggest that the junction is fine, and the additional numbers are fine, is the actual mechanics of the junction, because of the constant flow of traffic along the Oxford Road, turning right out of that, and indeed, turning left into Scous Lane from the Oxford Road, would be, you know, is there any data which shows what the wait times might be?
In terms of the analysis, so they've done counts of the flows within the area, the data would give some wait times, I'm not quite sure what they are. It's quite difficult to try and work through the numbers that's in the actual junction assessments themselves, to pick out a specific wait time on one arm of the junction. But it would go through that data, and it would provide, it's kind of, it assesses the junction in terms of the numbers that goes through it. So it wouldn't necessarily look at, oh, there's a wait time at the moment of X, but it would just assess the junction on that basis of the number of vehicles that are travelling through it. So, you know, it would increase the numbers, but I think that the number of vehicles is relatively low, as I say, that would go through there within an hour's period. So it then wouldn't make that any worse. In terms of the, or not any worse, but it wouldn't make it exponentially worse, that it would cause severe issues on that part of the network. In terms of the, going back to the previous point about the close proximity to the junction of the access into the drive-through facility, that access into the drive-through is also being assessed, in terms of the numbers that would go in and out into there, and that works in terms of, it's kind of well within its capacity, it's so low that it wouldn't have an impact, so that the queues and wouldn't then tail back on to Scous Lane. There is a relatively long stacking queue within the site, and kind of the, the queues wouldn't then tail back on to Scous Lane, causing an issue at the junction. So that the assessment has done all of that to make sure that there wouldn't be then a knock-on effect to the next junction.
Thank you. I mean, I think my only observation of that is that the projected very small numbers, I can't see how Greggs are going to make it viable, you know, if there's any one car coming in every, you know, the viability of the commercial, that's not our business, is it? It's just an observation, really. If we're projecting such low numbers, then, okay, thank you.
Councillor Hornby-Smith.
Thank you. I wanted to make a separate point, which is, I very much welcome in the report the recognition of the fact that this piece of open space is something of a gateway feature, transitioning from Tower House into Reading. And I think the report emphasises the fact that the landscaping as proposed by the applicant would be welcome as a mitigation feature, but it still removes the essential openness of that piece of land. And I think that that's something that we should be very protective of. So I would be very happy to support the officer's recommendation on this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Rowland.
Thank you. I'm just going to really second that. I think that this is, this really is a judgment call insofar as the fact that we've got an open space of land, which what you're looking from an aerial view is just a really rare, rare part of the balance of that landscape there. And were we to lose that in that area, there, it just, it won't be there again. And it really is critical. It is, and it's described, I think, very, very well by the officer in section 7.40, that that really sings to me about the visual amenity, about how that open space transitions, and how it provides a good inherent openness, which is the important part of its character, and it marks a changing character in the urban environment, and it is important in doing so. And it goes on to talk about the appearance of the grassed areas and the existing trees, very, very key. And that right there does it for me, and I'm also, in that regard, very happy to support the recommendation on that. And I do, again, thank officers for their extra work on that Green Link. Thank you.
Not seeing anybody else, I don't think. Is there anything officers wanted to come back on, or do we think we've given it all a good outing as we've gone through?
I don't think I've got anything to come back to you on, Chair, no.
Can I propose from the Chair that we do support the recommendation to refuse this application? I think it's a real pity that we can't include the traffic issues, but we've all heard what's said. I think we're all very sceptical about that, but, you know, unless it was built and operating, nobody can prove anything, really, can they? But we do have very good reasons to turn it down, the ones that were outlined earlier that have been worked on today, but also the whole issue of the open space, which I agree with everybody who's said that this is a very important piece of open space, as Tower House meets Reading, really, and it's, it would be an awful shame. And a lot of people do think it's public open space, which of course, it's not, it's in private ownership, but nevertheless, it's still a very important piece of open space. So can I see all those in favour of supporting the recommendation to refuse this application? Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Chair. Sorry for clarity, the other points that were added in earlier will be attached?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, Richard read them out earlier on, and the wording might be tweaked a little bit, but I think the intention of that wording was pretty clear. Okay, right, so let's, we're now going back to item seven, which is on page 35. This is 12 to 18 Crown Street. Who's introduced this?
Claire, Claire Ringwood.
Claire Ringwood is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. This application is for the change of use of 12 to 18 Crown Street from 44 serviced apartments to 44 flats. There are no external alterations proposed, and only minor modifications internally, to ensure the flats meet the required space standards. Bin storages to the rear, and an update report has been provided, which gives more clarification on the private refuse collection proposed. The applicant has submitted a viability assessment, which has been reviewed by the council's valuers. The council's valuers have concluded that scheme cannot deliver any affordable housing. The applicant has agreed, however, to enter into sex 106 agreement, to ensure that a deferred contributions mechanism is agreed, as set out in the main report. An appeal decision for 23 to 27 London Road has been appended to the main report, which was allowed by the inspector. This was for a similar scheme to that proposed at 12 to 18 Crown Street, and was referred to within the main report. The proposed flats all meet national space standards, and the internal layout and stacking is acceptable with good circulation space, and there are not considered to be any detrimental impacts to residents and neighbouring properties. Subject to the recommended conditions and the completion of a section 106 agreement listed in the main report, the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Page.
Chair, thanks for that. I have to say, I was really surprised when I got to the paragraphs on page 42 regarding the viability assessment. When I initially saw the description of the application, I When I initially saw the description of the application, I expected there to be a full contribution. This is a change of use from 44 serviced apartments to proposed 44 flats. And we are seriously being asked to believe that somehow the costs involved are so great that no contribution can be made to affordable housing. And I have to say, I remember only a few years ago being given assurances by government ministers, and I think we had a report to committee that indicated there would be a tightening up around viability to ensure that almost all developments would contribute, and that the situation of not being able to contribute towards affordable housing would become very much the exception. And I know there's a proposal here for a deferred payment mechanism, but I regard that as very much an exception that needs to be looked at in terms of a genuinely difficult site. And this involves no new construction, involves no remediation, we're not talking about contaminated land, difficult historical archaeological developments or whatever. So I would not be happy signing off at this stage and would ask for further information. I'm going to propose that we defer this item for further information. I could, however, construct an argument for refusing it tonight, but I'm not. And that brings me on to what I think is the quite outrageous departure from policy that's on the next page, where we're being asked to accept 70% one-bedroom and studio flats, where our policy is 40%. And again, we're told that the applicant states the more substantial changes to the existing layout would make the scheme unviable. Well, tough. If we want to flood this town with one-bedroom rabbit hutches and studio flats and then not accept even affordable housing contributions, then I think we are selling ourselves short. And I would very much like to know what it is about this proposal that again has officers saying that the viability is such as not to make a policy-compliant scheme viable. The appeal decision I regard as a rogue decision. I think it's a quite disgraceful decision and one that I think we should take a stand on if we feel minded to. And I'm not proposing a refusal tonight, I'm asking for further information about this. That brings me on to the amenity issue, Chair, on page 45, paragraph 6.4.2. The proposed scheme does not introduce any communal outdoor space, not existing. Well, for serviced apartments, that really isn't important, because by definition, people are staying there only a limited amount of time. But we're talking about permanent accommodation here. And then a somewhat, I thought this was a joke, there are a number of local parks and Forbury Gardens, which are easily accessible. Well, one could argue about how local the Forbury Gardens are to Crown Street, but at that point, I thought, ah, they'll be recommending a section 106 contribution towards our leisure and parks, but no such contribution is proposed. It could be justified, in my opinion, and should be as a minimum. So why isn't it there? So again, I would be grateful for that in a report back to the next committee. Reference on the Southampton Street scheme to the, on page 81, the scheme that we have approved, talks about a biodiverse green-stroke-brown roof. I understand that could be provided here, I think it's a flat roof here, but I stand to be corrected. If it is a flat roof, why is that not proposed here, as with the Southampton Street scheme? Moving on down for further information, please. The internal, the issue of noise is addressed in terms of windows, but colleagues have raised with me the issue about the noise between floors and to what extent with permanent flats proposed here, the existing situation is adequate. So some more information on that front, please. Then parking on the following page, page 46. Again, for serviced apartments, parking can be accepted at a much lower standard, and indeed we have done, and policy enables that. But here we're talking about permanent apartments and a deficiency of over 40 spaces. And then there's the usual comments about residents' parking and the restrictions, which tends to suggest that officers accept there's going to be some parking pressure from this development, but we've actually got the mitigation measures in terms of residents' parking to prevent that. So I think the deficiency in parking here is so substantial as to warrant further probing by the committee. And the issue of future occupants of the flats not getting permits, that's standard provision, and of course, any resident is entitled to apply for discretionary permits. But I think this sort of development will generate a large number, and therefore we need to look at that. And then the final point, Chair, officers might be able to answer it tonight, but under community infrastructure level, levy, it states the blindingly obvious here, the proposed development will be SIL liable, but no figure is given. It's given in other reports and should really be in front of the committee when a decision is taken. So Chair, for those reasons, I would propose the deferral of what I consider to be a hugely unsatisfactory application.
Is that seconded? councillor Rowland, you're seconding? Yep. Oh, mic's off again, sorry. I won't start taking other speakers now, because if it's coming back, people can speak then, unless anybody feels strongly that something's been missed from the list of things we need to have further information on, councillor Moore.
I do have quite a point actually with this in a wider context, is this is the second application tonight that does not, is not viable for affordable housing. And obviously, policy H3 does state on sites of 10 or more dwellings, 30% of the total dwellings will be of affordable housing. And in this municipal year alone, we've had quite a few applications which are not viable. If we continue on this trajectory, we're not going to meet our policy aspirations of 30% affordable housing. I think that's quite a worrying trend I wanted to bring up. And I do, I do support deferral for all the reasons councillor Page said, but I just kind of want to bring up that this is not a happy path we're treading. Thank you.
Okay, well, we've had the proposal from councillor Page, seconded by councillor Rowland, that we defer this for all the issues that councillor Page outlined to be clarified. Can I see all those in favour of a deferral? That's carried, thank you very much.
Chair, can officers just check each of the points, please?
Go on.
Just run through quickly, thanks. So the main issue is affordable housing, so justifying the lack of affordable housing based on viability, as well as taking into account other aspects, including things like housing need and harm, and whether there's anything outweighing the benefits outweighing that harm. And the questions about deferred payments and the appropriateness of those. This query is about the mix, so predominantly one-bedroom units and the size of those, and the question of whether that's appropriate to carry forward into this new use as proposed. There's the appeal question of the appeal decision and the weight to be given to that, and the appropriateness of referring to that in terms of any decision on this application. The appropriateness of relying on Forbury Gardens as outdoor space to serve the development, and if indeed that is the case, or whether there's any more local space which could be provided, and whether a contribution is, should be required of the developer to achieve The query, in terms of consistency with the Southampton Street proposal that we looked at earlier tonight, the question of whether a biodiverse brown roof is also appropriate on this site, and if not, why not? The issue of noise, yeah, the application refers to environmental noise beyond the site, but also the question of noise between floors and noise transfer within the building. And then the question of the appropriateness of the parking standards, the reduced number that were allowed because of the serviced apartments, and whether that's appropriate to be carried forward for the dwellings now proposed. Question of appropriate immunity for future occupiers, and the question of SIL and the figures that may be attributable to this scheme in terms of SIL. I think that's probably, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I think that is pretty much everything. Yep. Okay, thank you so we've agreed that we will defer that and have back with that further information. Then takes us on to the report on page 89 on the unit eight Stadium Way. I think Connie Davis is going to introduce that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Full planning permission is sought for the conversion of a vacant warehouse to a climbing centre with minor external alterations. The application site is located within a core employment area as specified within the Reddenborough local plan. Whilst the proposal would result in a loss of an industrial building, the proposal would still see the site in an employment use, and the application has demonstrated that the site is preferable for the type of activity proposed. It would also bring back a five-year vacant site into operation. As noted in the main report, the proposal is deemed acceptable in terms of other material considerations, such as design and transport. The recommendation is therefore to grant permission, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody got comments or questions? You put your hands up simultaneously, I'll take councillor Williams first.
Thank you very much, Chair. My iPad has decided not to work, so forgive me, I was going to quickly flick through this. I think the application also uses air-source heat pumps, which is also good to see, and I guess I wanted to ask the same question as I asked on the other application. What's going on on the roof? Are solar panels being considered to support the air-source heat pumps during the cold winter months? Or is anything, I don't know whether the engineering of these buildings would support anything heavy in the way of green or brown roofs, but was that considered and ruled out? So I guess those are my questions.
Do you want to deal with those first, and then I'll go on to councillor Moore?
Solar panels or a change in the roof was not discussed or considered as part of the application. And the proposed sustainability measures that the applicant felt they could propose on the building were outlined in their sustainability statement, which on balance were considered enough to support the application in terms of our sustainability policies. And so although it wasn't directly spoken about, the applicant put forward all that they felt that they could achieve on this site.
Did you want to come back on that?
I guess that feels disappointing, because I would have liked to have known whether this building had the sort of engineering structure to support solar panels or a green or brown roof. And I guess the fact that that conversation wasn't had is due to the fact that they did submit enough sustainability elements to satisfy officers. I don't know in planning terms whether, well, I presume in planning terms, we couldn't have insisted on any further sustainability measures, otherwise it wouldn't be before us tonight with the recommendation it has. But maybe officers could just comment on whether we should be having those discussions about what people are doing with their roofs, and whether there are any planning reasons where we can nudge developments towards the sustainable use of that, what appears to be a very large area indeed on top of that building.
Do you want to come back on that? Or Richard, do you want to?
I think in my reading of the report, this kind of use in these kind of warehouses, they are inherently energy-hungry. From the sustainability statement that we have here, I think the developer was going beyond the sorts of things that we could require them to do. So we were quite welcoming towards this, rather than going down the line of trying to push them on to alternatives. So we accepted what they were putting forward, frankly.
Okay, and then councillor Moore.
Yeah, I'm especially pleased to see that the unit's been empty for five years, brought back into use, I think that's absolutely brilliant. And I'm especially pleased to see it being used for a really good sort of physical activity and providing other amenities to the people of Reading. I don't think we have such a thing currently that I'm aware of. I think having that, another string to our bow in terms of that is a fantastic thing, and I'd be supporting this application.
I just wanted to ask a couple of points, but also I wanted to start off by just saying, I think that the alternatives to, given that it can't be assessed in BRIM criteria, it's alternatives set out in 6.28. It's very clear that they have thought about sustainability issues. I accept the points made earlier, that we can look further on those. But I also think that that's a good list, and it shows proactive thought and it shows care for the environment, and I welcome those set out in 6.28. I have a slight query on a slightly, just a technical query, on 613, in 613, it suggests that the peak hour is between six and seven when 45 members arrive. But in 616, it says that the proposed 16 on-site spaces could be fully occupied between five and six. But I just have some clarification, because obviously if it's from five and six, people will still be coming out of the warehouses around there, and so that those spaces won't be available. But if it's between six and seven, that does make a difference, because presumably some of the other surrounding warehouses spaces will be available and will take up some of the slack of those 45 people for 16 spaces.
Do you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Chair. The actual parking number of when they would be required is kind of between that five and six time period. It's kind of, I think it's the trip generation that's the one that kind of is dealing with that 613 paragraph of when the numbers will be going in and out, whereas the actual parking is earlier. And I know that sounds kind of a strange one, it's the way they've assessed the application that makes that a little bit complicated, but I think it's, the trip generation is doing six and seven, because it's the cumulative impact throughout that time period. So it kind of, some people are starting to get there just after six. So it is an odd one, the way they've done it, it is complicated to try and work through, because they've tried to do it in numerous different ways, but they have used other similar sites to generate the accumulation data for the parking and get the trip rate analysis to work that through. But those hours are correct in terms of what has been established as part of this assessment. But it does work, I think it's just that within that six to seven, there's a lot more people leaving than actually arriving and staying to park. So I think that's where that comes from. More people have attended through the five and six period and then are leaving through the six to seven period. So I hope that clarifies that point.
councillor Hornby-Smith, if you want to come back on that?
Yeah, just very briefly, I think it does. I think the key words that you used there were, it's going to work. And that's what I just wanted, an assurance that even if it is five till six when people are arriving, will the, if 45 people are arriving during that time for 16 car parking spaces, presumably some car parking spaces will already be occupied. Just wanted to double-check that you are satisfied that the residual parking around that local area will be able to take it and absorb that.
Yeah, so there is the required parking during that time period, and obviously the car park is being managed even now to kind of make sure there isn't the long-term parking within the estate, to make sure that there is sufficient parking around there. And the parking is being managed now, so it's not a case of, this is your parking and you can only park here. It is literally, anyone can park anywhere within there, and you kind of register that through the ANPR process as you enter the building that you're visiting. So it does allow for that flexibility between all of the different uses that will have different peaks throughout the course of the day. different peaks throughout the the course of the day.
Thank you.
We're happy there that there is sufficient parking.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Lang, you were indicating?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm very supportive of this application. Yeah, climbing hang, I think it's the second one. I've got a story about the previous one that I won't go into now. I also quite like the name, the bouldering centre. It sounds a lot more, a lot more exciting, doesn't it, than just a climbing centre? Anyway, my my main little comment was going to be when I'd previously worked on the other one. I was surprised at how expensive it was to tell you the truth. So I did make inquiries when it said it would provide affordable, accessible to all ages and families and all that sort of stuff. And I won't say the figure that I got back, because it's, you know, you can interpret what is affordable and what isn't. But the figure that I heard was a lot less than the numbers being charted at the other one. And I think it will provide fun and fitness. Maybe when people have finished eating their Kentuckys and McDonald's round there, they can go and burn off some calories, can't they?
Thank you, Chair.
Or not, yeah, or not.
Okay, I think that's everybody who's indicated. So can I see all those in favour of approving this application? Thank you. That's unanimous as well. Thank you all very much. Can I ask you all to dismantle, can I ask you all to dismantle your your microphones to help the officers clearing up, please? And if you haven't had a haven't had a crash course in how to do it, I'm sure somebody will show you.